I know, it's. It's the bigger the dog, how are you getting the exercise?
Yeah, well, I don't have a doggy anymore, but I don't know. We need to get you another dog.
No, we don't.
Why not?
We're good too.
You get a little smaller one that you can travel with you. Because my daughter-in-law from Jersey, she's now got her, uh, her little Eleanor traveling with her. And there seems like there's a lot more animals traveling nowadays.
Um, yeah, right. Um. I know, I, I'm, I brought my coat over because if I have to wear my coat, I'm wearing my coat.
That day when we had the. Well, that's nice. We've got our W two form here. Guess they don't give us our mail very often. This was December 12th.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome on this cold, cold evening to the regular meeting of the Leewood Governing Body. Uh, my apologies, uh, we ran a little bit long in our work session, uh, but we still, um, we're in good shape to get the work done that we need to get done this evening. So as I call the meeting to order, I would ask that the clerk call the roll, please.
Julie Kane.
Here.
Chuck Sipple.
Here.
Mary Larson.
Here.
Deb Phillips.
Here.
Ellen Sunkel.
Here.
Sherry Gayed.
Here.
Lisa Harrison.
Here.
And Stephen Castor.
Here.
Appearing on Zoom and Mayor Mark Elkins is present presiding.
Thank you. I find that, uh, the entirety of the governing body is present either by Zoom or in person, and therefore we have a quorum and can proceed to the business of the evening. With that, I would ask the scouts from Troop 449 and Troop 6449 to please present the colors.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Color guard, please post the colors. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. If you are in uniform, please salute. If not, put your right hand over your heart. I pledge my allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Color guard, retreat. Color guard, at ease. Audience, at ease.
Thank you very much, Troop 449 and Troop 6449. I'd invite you all to come back forward. Now, you can't leave yet. If you all want to come forward to the lectern and introduce yourselves and, uh, tell us a little bit about your troop. I understand there's a, a special happening going on in our downstairs tonight that impacts you all, so please let us know about that as well. So, sir, if you want to proceed.
Uh, my name is Silas Felt. I'm in Troop 449 and I'm currently a life scout. Um, and downstairs, I think we're getting the Trooper of the Year award.
Congratulations.
Uh, my name is Dash Nelson. I am Tenderfoot and, um, what he said.
Who, who is your chartered organization?
So, uh, the, oh, I forgot the name of it, but it's a church.
Well, good. We appreciate, uh, the church partnering with the scouts to, to put together your troop. Who else is with us tonight?
Uh, my name's Jessica. I'm in Troop 6449 and I'm currently a second-class scout.
Great. We're glad you're here, Jessica. Great job tonight. And who else do we have?
My name is Lucy. I'm in PAC 3010. I'm a Weeweeble.
Hi, Lucy. Thank you for being with us and joining with the scouts. Silas, I had a question for you. Um, one is, are you gonna get your eagle?
Um, I, I plan to.
Okay, very good. Um, again, thank you guys for doing a great job tonight. Um, and, uh, as some of you know, I worked with your troop a number of years ago, and it's great to see that Troop 449 is still thriving. Oh, I know what the question I wanted to ask was. Can you tell the, the governing body here a little bit about the difference between Troop 449 and Troop 6449?
Um, for us, the only real difference is that BSA doesn't allow us to have a, a mixed troop. So we have to have a troop for the boys and a troop for the girls, like, for regulations. But for like the everyday, like, troop meetings and campouts, we are pretty mixed, which is, I think, useful as a learning experience.
Great. So you're, you're what they refer to as two linked troops, similar committees and similar scout masters and whatnot. Six four four nine, though, is technically for the young ladies and four four nine is for the young men.
Yes.
Great. Well, again, thank you for being here. It means a lot to us to have you all present our colors for us. Thanks again. And with that, we'll take a look at the agenda. Staff, do you have any changes or amendments to the agenda as it was published? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it was published?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was published, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the agenda is unanimously approved. There are no citizens that signed in, uh, for public comments tonight with the exception of, of one, uh, citizen who will be speaking on one of our special items of business a little bit later on. We'll move on to proclamations. Uh, Stacy, do I have any proclamations to report tonight?
Not for tonight.
I, I would note that the, uh, city, um, of Leewood, uh, did, and I can't remember if I actually read it out loud at our last, uh, governing body meeting or not, so I apologize, but we did, I did issue a proclamation recognizing yesterday as Martin Luther King Day, um, in the city of Leewood and encouraging Leewood citizens to take a moment to contemplate, uh, uh, the non-violent protest approach that, uh, Dr. King did, as well as, as his thought of, um, uh, of service to, uh, all the community and encouraged our citizens and our residents to, uh, to do different service projects. Uh, we'll talk, I presented that, uh, uh, proclamation to the Johnson County and Wyandotte County NCAA, uh, NAACP, sorry. Um, that was football game after the, uh, the NAACP, uh, meeting that I went to last night. Um, but, uh, and they were pleased, uh, that, uh, to receive our proclamation. Uh, I don't believe we have any presentations or recognitions either tonight, and I think that takes us to the special business of the evening. And with that, I would rec, I would welcome, uh, Emily Randall, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, um, uh, to the podium, uh, from Climate Action KC. And that does not look like Ms. Randall, but Ms. Chris, I'm wel, I'm happy to see you here as well.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the City Council, uh, this evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Emily Randall, who is currently serving as the Managing Director for Climate Action KC. Uh, previous to her position with Climate Action KC, Emily spent 10 years at the City of Mission as the Deputy City Administrator. Uh, Emily is here tonight, um, on behalf of Climate Action KC, who is, uh, currently reaching out to cities across the region, um, and counties to, uh, provide updates on their activities for the Climate Action Plan and how their work can support our work here with the City of Leewood, um, in the greater context of the regional, um, regional context. So I'm gonna. Come on up.
Thank you, Ms. Chris. Welcome, welcome, Ms. Randall.
Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, staff. So pleased to be here this evening. Um, as Michelle mentioned, we are Climate Action KC and are visiting cities in the region, uh, to just update you on what we're working on so that you feel free reaching out to us and that we can, uh, gather Leewood's input and projects as we report out on all of the various activities that are happening across the region. Um, I've worked with Michelle in the past and it's nice to be here, um, as her guest, as well as everyone else's. Um, thank you so much. Um, I will just go over a little bit of background. First, Climate Action KC is a nonprofit. We are working in the Kansas City region on behalf of the nine counties represented by the Mid-America Regional Council, as well as Douglas County, so 10 counties total. Uh, bringing elected officials and community leaders together in private and public sector to work collectively around the issues of climate action, uh, to better the quality of life, the prosperity, and the environmental, uh, standards for our region. We, we use data. We, uh, will go into more of that later in the presentation. We act as a convener. I think of Climate Action KC as a bit of an umbrella for all of the various work that's happening across the sectors. Um, uh, also nonpartisan and very impact-oriented. Clearly, all of this work is rooted in action and, um, against a time clock that is more and more apparent all of the time. The founding story of Climate Action KC really came from, uh, your peers and, um, the elected official space, um, coming out of the IPCC report where, uh, some of the science-based, uh, climate action results were coming forward. Those leaders in the region realized that we in the heartland in Kansas City could be working more effectively if we worked together, saving, uh, time, uh, sharing resources, et cetera. So a very large group of elected officials and others came together approximately around 2018, 2019 to start looking at what we could do. Uh, from that, this nonprofit was formed. Uh, again, it, it started all purely volunteer. I am the first, um, sort of executive level staff person, um, on a paid basis, but this was these people and others, uh, putting their time in, uh, working toward what we could do if we collaborated. Um, working very closely, um, with Mid-America Regional Council and others, uh, we, they, I was at this time a recipient of this, uh, tool. The first tangible piece that came together as a result of this collaboration was the Climate Action Playbook. And it was based on, if you're familiar with Project Drawdown, um, it is available online if you'd like to read it. This was very practical strategies targeted to local governments. And so as Michelle mentioned, I worked for the City of Mission for 10 years, and so we were recipients of this work and could look at this document and evaluate it based on each distinct climate action. Local government, as you know, has, um, a lot of different lever, levers to pull, either by leading by example, by changing ordinances, for example, or just encouraging and educating community members and to do what they can do in their respective spaces. So this was a very welcome piece. I think it's interesting to reflect back on those moments and we're, we're much further along, including your, your community as well. But those were, those were important days. Then, working very closely with Mid-America Regional Council, um, and other partners, Climate Action KC created the Regional Climate Action Plan. And this, again, was the data piece that we like to highlight, um, that comes together in all of these different various segments of our economy and of our government and other things to really evaluate, um, some key targets, uh, based on greenhouse gas inventory emissions by, um, industry, by sector, uh, and applying some of these actions to each of those. And again, you can, um, scan the code and, and find that online. Uh, I know that your community is very familiar with the document, as was reflected in your packet as well. Um, I'd just like to share that, the, the, what drives us piece coming from the Regional Climate Action Plan. It found that 63% of our region's greenhouse gas emissions were attributed to buildings, both the residential and commercial sectors. Uh, so we really, we really want to focus in where it counts and where we'll be able to be positioned to make the biggest difference. 34% of our region's greenhouse gas emissions are attributed to transportation. So if you think about the biggest slices of the pie and where we need to be making, like, big, big changes, um, these are, these are those areas. Um, we set, uh, targets, uh, as part of the Regional Climate Action Plan that you'll see there for net zero emissions and the local government, energy generation, and homes and building spaces, um, that lead up to a net zero region by 2050. So clearly, there's lots of work happening across sectors, across communities, across state lines. Um, but this lays out some framework and some targets for, um, some improvements there. Again, just to reiterate that as we were working through the plan, as we were engaging with communities, working with the playbook, a few things here that we believe. Collective action is more effective and efficient. Um, so clearly, we are just all about resource sharing and not reinventing the wheel. We have staff in communities, um, staff at, in private sector who are really seeking to share good ideas and to work more effectively, and we can do that if we communicate. Um, we believe that these actions, and we're learning more about that all the time, that many of these climate actions make sense for so many different reasons that it's cutting across, you know, political lines. It's making good sense for all types of communities, um, all types of people, all types of businesses. And as we gain more experience and stories from those who are implementing this work, um, that's really coming through in what we're hearing. Um, we also believe that the, the co-benefits, so you take public health, you take quality of life, you take, um, budgets in terms of, um, city government or other places, that there, there are benefits that are coming from this work, um, that make just Kansas Cityans' lives better. Uh, we also, uh, believe that we have the information and tools that we need now to do this work. We don't need to invent some silver bullet, but we know what we need to do and we know that we can do it if the, if the will is there and that the time to address climate change is now, so that every, every little bit of work we can do sooner rather than later helps in terms of the rolling clock of emissions that we're always emitting as we go about our day. Uh, Climate Action KC, uh, launched the Building Energy Exchange to focus again on that, those building sectors, working with developers. We're happy to do that on a concierge-type basis. Uh, we're highlighting project success stories. We're demonstrating, um, the financial tools that can be stacked to support projects that are being, um, uh, rewarding high-performance buildings. We also launched last year Plug-in KC, uh, in partnership with EverG to really, um, target the, in electric vehicle, uh, space, um, but also electric equipment. We had a great event at Burns and McDonnell last November that, um, targeted, um, electric equipment in the construction space and kind of took some skeptics, historic skeptics, out in the field who are really, um, being, um, impressed by what electric equipment out in the fields can do. But also for consumer education and helping just individual residents who have questions. The code there takes you to Plug-in KC's website and, um, there's an electric vehicle finder tool on that website that is updated so people can compare mileage and, and costs and things like that, which we find, uh, people are really looking forward to finding. Uh, Climate Action Summit is probably our most visible, uh, output. Uh, we will be having our fourth summit, uh, on April 5th at Unity Temple on the Plaza. This historically has been the largest sustainability gathering in our region with over 600, um, attendees. We hope you all join us. Um, we really value these opportunities to, again, come together and coordinate and, um, uh, move forward in a coordinated fashion. And so we'll be hearing an update, we believe, on the regional greenhouse gas inventory, um, as well as having a great, exciting keynote speaker that will be, uh, announced very, very soon. Um, and then just highlights about all the different various work that's happening in our region and a path for future, future work that will be coming together. Just a couple slides more. Local government support. We really do believe that this was our, our bread and butter and where we were founded. And we know that there are staff in every of our cities that are working sometimes, um, on the side, obviously. Not very many cities have sustainability titles, um, in their ranks, but we are all doing jobs plus. So if you're the Public Works Director, all of a sudden sustainability falls to you more and more. Or if you're the Deputy City Administrator, you might be working on facility upgrades, or who knows, depending on how large or small your city is. So we really want to be connecting those dots for staff and making all of us be able to work more, uh, cohesively. Uh, so we're doing these presentations. We're also, uh, working on just, um, education and information sharing. Um, we had an event in June where we, which is one of those photos you see there, where some of the, um, attendees just shared projects that are coming up in this year. So you'll just see just a sampling of those there. Um, but it really runs the gamut and it runs the gamut based on community as well, community size, um, both sides of the state line, obviously. Um, so we want to just be tracking this, sharing out lessons learned and, uh, making more progress together. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions. Again, uh, please do join us on April 5th. I think that'll be great, a great event and it will teach you a lot more about us. And then happy to reach out if you would like our contact information. It's there.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Questions for Ms. Randall or comments? If not, we very much appreciate the work that you've done and, uh, we have appreciated the opportunity to respond to the various inquiries that you've made. We look forward to continuing to support your efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is an ordinance amending Section 2-201 of the Code of the City of Leewood, um, pertaining to animal licensing and vaccinations and repealing exist, existing Section 2-201 and other sections of the code that conflict therewith. This is an outgrowth of the discussion I think we had last meeting. I lose a little track of the calendar here already in 2025, uh, concerning, um, the discussion we had concerning, uh, animal licensing. Uh, Ms. Dodder, do you wish to present, um, the, um, uh, support for the ordinance of this? Oh, oh, Stephen, welcome. I thought you were on vacation.
I am.
I am, I am. I'm in rainy, cold, uh, St. Augustine, Florida, and we're under a freeze advisory. So.
Did, did you take your gloves with you? We did, you don't need them here tonight.
I, I have them.
Very good. Well, I apologize, Stephen. I didn't realize that you would be on by, by Zoom, so please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, this, uh, you're right, this item was, uh, discussed at the last council meeting and staff gave, or council gave staff direction to bring forth an ordinance that would essentially eliminate the licensing requirement for dogs and cats and in its place, uh, require that dogs and cats wear an ID tag or be microchipped um, and that the tag or a microchip contain at least an owner's telephone number so that those animals could be returned if they were, uh, lost and found. And that the tags must be worn, um, at all times when the animal is not indoors or in a vehicle and that rabies certificates must be shown when requested to do so by an animal control officer or a law enforcement officer. And so there is still the requirement that all dogs and all cats be up to date on all rabies vaccinations. The ordinance also makes it unlawful for anyone to bring an unvaccinated dog to the Leewuff Dog Park or to violate any, uh, posted signs or placards at the dog park or any other park or greenway in the city. The legal department, uh, prepared the ordinance that was in the packet and the animal control officers reviewed the language and were fine with the suggested recommendations. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Stephen. Are there questions for Stephen? Mr. Sipple, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Stephen, help me understand how we're gonna communicate to all of the people that have bought tags in the past that they don't have to do that anymore. I see that we're gonna have it in our, in our, in our newsletter, but is that gonna be sufficient?
That's a good question, and, uh, what we intend to do is notify the folks who are registered, uh, either through the CitizenServe Licensing Portal or via mail. Uh, we'll also post it on social media and our website and use all of our other communication tools, uh, that Beth and Sam have spun up for us.
I, I guess I just want to avoid having somebody come in and register their dog or cat and have a sign on the window say, "You don't have to do that anymore."
Yeah.
It's frustrating to citizens to not know what's going on. So I would recommend that we somehow incorporate this change into our Homes Association meeting, which is gonna take place in March, I believe. So we ought to have some publication that says it's no longer required.
Okay. And we can certainly send notice to the HOAs. We now have a very good, uh, contact list for all of our HOA presidents that we can share the information with if the ordinance is passed and that, that's always a great tool to reach a lot of folks.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other questions for Stephen? Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. Um, Stephen, am I correct in thinking that it was through the licensing, I'm looking at your chair like you're here. That's hysterical. Um, that it was through the licensing that we would learn if people had, for example, three dogs or four dogs instead of the limit of two and therefore they'd go through the special sets of activities that would happen if you have three or more dogs. Is that correct?
Um, not entirely. In most cases, citizens learn about the special animal permit through a complaint.
Ah, okay.
So, for instance, a dog is barking or a dog is running at large and then animal, animal control learns they have three dogs and they have to come to get the permit. Uh, very, very few people proactively get the special animal permit on their own.
Very good. Okay, I just wanted to see how that loophole would be closed and it's
Mm-hmm.
Animal control officers and.
Councilmember Castor has his hand, or I think wishes to speak.
Mr. Castor?
No, I do not, sorry. Must have hit the wrong button there.
No worries. I've got Stacy watching to make sure when you raise your virtual hand that we know you're wanting to speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Castor? Any discussion?
Hearing no more. I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, this is an amendment to the ordinance and requires a roll call vote. I would ask that the clerk call the roll, please.
Councilmember Phylla?
Aye.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayet?
Aye.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
And Councilmember Castor?
Aye. Thank you. I have that. An eight to zero vote, and the ordinance amending Section 2-201 of the City of Leewood Code is unanimously approved and adopted. Stephen, thank you very much for joining us on your vacation. Please enjoy the rest and see if you can't find a place warm. If you can't find a place warm in Florida, I don't know where else you go, but good luck.
Thank you, Mayor. Good night.
Thank you. Good evening. We now come to the consent agenda of the evening. There are a number of items on the agenda. Are there any governing body members who wish to withdraw an item off of the consent agenda for additional discussion? Ms. Kane?
H and J.
H and J. Thank you. Other items to be withdrawn? Yes, Mr. Sipple.
Eight K, please.
K. Others? Yes, Ms. Harrison?
L, please.
L? Any other items that any governing body member wishes to discuss in greater detail?
Mayor, J is fine.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I meant K as well, so I'll pull J. I'll pull J away from my poll.
Okay, so J is still on the consent agenda then, as far as you're concerned?
Yes, please. Thank you. Sorry.
Nope. No worries. Any other items to be withdrawn?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Phylla. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Before we move to vote, I would just note as a matter of clarification that item, if I can find it here now, Item F is in Frank on the budget calendar. Just to note for, so that everybody takes notice of it, the packet memo referenced a budget calendar that included a series of governing body meetings, but the calendar itself references finance committee meetings. And it is my intent for those meetings to be meetings of the finance committee that would include those members of the citizenry that are on the finance committee. So just don't think there's a need for additional discussion, but I did want to pull that off to make that clarification. With that, there's a motion pending to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Items H, K, and L, I believe. If that is indeed the case, all those in favor of approval, J was put back in just a moment ago, so let me try again. The pending motion is for the approval of consent items with the exception of Items H, K, and L. Any further discussion? If not, all those approving the consent agenda with those exceptions, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda with the exceptions of H, K, and L is unanimously approved. Let's look first at Item H, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Superior Bowen Asphalt Company in an amount not to exceed $5,819,616. Ms. Kane?
Yes. David, as Chair of the Public Works Committee, could you refresh our memory? We definitely talked about this at the Public Works Committee, but it's been a minute since we talked about it. I didn't pull aye, which was the second half of this same Tomahawk Creek Parkway improvement, but this is a big number. This is a $12.5 million number. So can you refresh the memories in case some of our colleagues were not here at the time it was initially approved? Maybe they were, maybe they weren't. I can't remember, to be honest. Thank you.
So originally, it was right around 2018 is when we planned for Tomahawk Creek Improvements, the Parkway. We were looking initially just to do a mill and overlay, and then at the time Scott Lambert's wanted to add bike lanes, and so we increased the cost. It was about $2.5 million or so, just off the top of my head, and that was to do the mill and overlay and then add on four-foot bike lanes. We had some federal funding opportunities come up, the $3.76 million, but in order to get that, we ended up adding at the intersection of Town Center Drive and Tomahawk Creek Parkway, the roundabout. We went from four-foot bike lanes to five-foot bike lanes, and then we added, we're going to be doing some native trees along the west side of Tomahawk Creek Parkway. And so that's, so this is kind of as we're going forward. So that was about 2020, 2021. Then as we continue to think about the project, since we are doing so much of this work and the pavement's already 40-plus years old and it's in the flood plain, it floods frequently, that we approached the county and they were willing to provide roughly $4.4 million to not only do all that work, but actually remove the entire roadway and raise the roadbed. And so that's, the project really is what it entails. So it's going to start here the 1st of February if this is approved. It's pretty much a reconstruction from college down to Row. We're going to remove the roadway and we're going to raise it up in some areas up to six feet. We're adding the bike lanes, doing the roundabout, and then as part of that, we need to do some flood benching through the park. And so that's going to occur here in February. And then we're going to, so we're going to replace part of the trail in the park and then a parking lot at the end of Town Center Drive as part of the project. So we also added fiber optics or fiber to go from just the center to the park for city communication. And so the project did come in, and it's a little bit over what we had estimated in the CIP, but it's still under the project authorization that you all approved several years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Ms. Kane?
Yes, it was, we have an awesome Public Works Committee full of a number of engineers. Not everybody's an engineer, but the bulk of them are engineers that really have, you know, something to add. So kudos to David and the way he runs the Public Works Committee because he does ask for input, and there is some really good input from the people on that committee. So thank you for reminding us. This has been a long time coming, including the roundabout. We talked a long time about the merits of roundabouts as opposed to the merits of not putting in a roundabout, so thank you. With that, I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Ms., or I'm sorry, I'll start with Ms. Larson.
Just one quick question, and pardon my ignorance, I keep struggling with the college to Row, and I didn't see a map. Maybe there was a map and I missed it. But college to Row, isn't, it's Tomahawk Creek Parkway, College to 119th Street? What am I missing?
Yes, so Tomahawk Creek Parkway continues south of 119th Street, goes to Row, and then I believe it's still called Tom. I have to check on this. I think it might be called that to Noll.
You mean Town Center Drive?
To Noll. That's Tomahawk, no, that's Town Center Drive. Or Tomahawk Creek Parkway, no, sorry. Tomahawk Creek Parkway. It starts at college, that's the north end, and then as you go south, pass across 119th and you continue to Row. That's all Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
Oh, so it's going past Trader Joe's and...
Yeah, it's going to go behind the...
I did not realize it went that far. So that's what I was missing. I just couldn't compute that, so I had left out that whole southern section past 119th Street, so thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Mr. Sipple?
David, in one of these, is H or J, there's some comment about doing some revisions to the creek itself. Are you going to terrace that and widen it so it doesn't come out of its banks during high water?
It still will come out of the banks during the high water, but in order to offset the fill that we're putting in on the roadway to bring it up, we do have to go in on the creek and remove some of the embankment adjacent to the creek. And so that's the work. Once we get in there to do that, that's why we're doing the trails, because we're going to be tearing up the trails to get back in there.
So where along the trail will that, will it be done all the way from college down to 119th and then down to Row?
There's three, I believe there are three areas, starting at the north end by north of the lake, of the north lake.
North of the north lake.
Yeah, there's just few areas as you go south.
Okay.
And so that'll be done up front.
Okay.
And then we're going to close, yeah, so the trails will be closed for a period of time, and during that time, we'll divert everybody over to the sidewalk that's on the west side of Town Center, or Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other questions for Mr. Lay or discussion concerning Item H? Yes, Ms. Phylla?
When you mentioned the closings, I was just, when does this start?
Beginning, probably the first week of February, they're going to start mobilizing.
So I'm hoping our Director of Communication is all on this because we need to divert a lot of traffic, right? We want a lot of people not going there.
Right. She, we have been working...
Postcards went out last week.
Yeah, we've been working with Beth. We have, I believe there are four by eight signs that we're going to install here this week, hopefully get them up, and so they're obviously large signs for each direction to let everyone know that construction's coming, and then we're going to send out more postcards here this week.
And so like if you're coming southbound, you can divert to college before you get into them?
Well, it's going to remain open, one lane each direction from college down to 115th, and then you'll go over to 115th and Row. That'll be the detour. And then south of there, down to 119th Street will be closed just, it'll be open to local traffic only, but closed to through traffic while they construct the roundabout.
I'm just curious, if you're going to give people the chance before they get past, you know, college, are you going to give them a chance to go over to Row or don't turn here, go to Row?
Yeah, we can have signs up that say, "Road closed ahead." Most people don't follow those though, but...
Well, once they've gone through it, they'll probably remember, and that sign will go, "Oh, yeah, turn right."
I would also note that there's a plan to put signs each up on the trail as well because the trail will be actually closed for longer than the streets will be, so the bicyclists and walkers will get a heads up before they get to the "Do Not Go Forward" sign to let them know that the trail will be closed.
And we'll detour, like I mentioned, we'll detour the trail people over to the sidewalk on the west side of Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
So David, just a question along those lines, though. The trail carries bicycle traffic. Is it your expectation that bicycle traffic will be routed to the sidewalk as well?
So they'll be on the street is where they'll be able to go.
At least that's where it's supposed to be.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Kane?
That's an interesting thought. So are brand-new shiny bathrooms for, they're going to be not used, blocked off? If the trail is going to be closed and the road's going to be closed, then that's going to...
That park will remain open.
That part will remain open. So the trails on the east side are not, are going to be usable during this whole thing? I thought you just said the trails are going to be...
Trail will be closed, but the park will be open.
The park will be open.
The park, the trail is east of the park.
But the bathroom is not adjacent to that park. The bathroom is...
The trail, the bathroom is in the, right next to the north lake.
Right.
And the parking lot that's at the north lake will remain open.
Okay.
So people can still park there.
Okay, thank you. So 4th of July, then, is, this'll all be torn up, so traffic and the buses and everything, we're thinking ahead that far?
Well, the road north of 115th Street will be open, so if we want to utilize bus parking in the, at the park, we'll be able to still do that, at the north lake, I should say.
Is that where they parked? I thought they parked on the west side.
And then they park on the west side also because they'll have access out to Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other additional comments or questions? If not, I think we have a motion and a second pending. All those in favor of adopting the resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Superior Bowen Asphalt Company, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. I believe that brings us to Item K, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a utility agreement between the city and EverGee Metro, Inc. in the amount of $5,736,701.91 pertaining to the 123rd Street Mission Road to State Line Road project, overhead power lines placed underground. Ms. Kane? Or Mr. Sipple, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The number, help me reconcile the difference between the cost of undergrounding is $8,003, but it says here it's going to be $5,007. What are those two numbers?
So EverGee is required to relocate their overhead power if we're in conflict and they're in the right of way at their cost.
Right.
And so if we were to just direct EverGee to relocate overhead, they would have to relocate their entire facilities from Mission to State Line Road, and that cost is $2.7 million for them to do that. So the total cost to underground is 8.4, so we're only responsible for the difference between the total construction cost minus what they would have to pay to go overhead, so we're just paying that difference at 5.7 million. I say only, it's still quite a bit. That's a big number.
Is this generally more expensive than the Mission Road project between 127th and 133rd and then south to 143rd? These numbers are a lot bigger than what I think we approved years ago.
In the current CIP, it includes $6 million out of the EgoDevo fund, so this is, this is under what we show in the CIP. But it did go up significantly a few years ago. It was approximately half this.
Right.
And then after we met with EverGee, they went out and started doing preliminary design work, and there's just a lot more switch gears and transformers that they need because it's speeding so many different residential properties that they have to keep going, you know, a lot of side streets that they're trying to connect back into, and so that really increases the cost, along with a significant number of trees that they're trying to avoid.
This is a very large number. What's the next road improvement project where you anticipate having to bury overhead lines after this one?
Yeah, so after this one, it would be Mission Road from 143rd down to 151st.
Because the distance between Mission Road and State Line's about a mile?
It's a mile and a quarter.
Okay, so we're really looking at $4 million bucks a mile, give or take.
Correct.
So, I don't know, I'm increasingly concerned about how expensive this is. You know, it was a very altruistic sort of a thing years ago when the mayor and the council approved this approach. It's great, but it's very expensive, very expensive.
Now, this section is quite a bit more expensive than what we've experienced in the past, but if you go out there, you will notice there's, trees are overhanging the existing power lines, and so what they would need to do is to push the power lines five feet or so to the south.
To the south.
And then they're going to trim another 10 feet beyond that in order to create their buffer that they require. So it's going to be, if we were to have them relocate overhead, there's going to be a loss of a significant number of trees along that corridor.
When do you anticipate the start of this and the completion of this undergrounding?
So the next step, once we get this agreement in place, is we need to work with property owners. I believe there's about 15 easements that we need in order to do this underground, and so if we are unable to get those easements, then we're going to refer this back to the Public Works Committee to discuss whether we want to proceed forward with condemnation on those properties or if we just want to tell EverGee to go overhead.
Will it start during Calendar 25?
We are hoping it'll, yeah, we're hoping EverGee will finish by the end of this year or early next year so we can begin 123rd Street improvements early next year.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Appreciate it. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. David, you said the magic word of easements, and you tickled a part of my brain. I heard from a couple of residents, years ago, this part of Leewood South was in my ward. I don't think it is anymore, but as, when you're collecting the easements, and you've probably seen it, the way that the six-foot fences along, on the south side of 123rd, they kind of jump eight feet, and then they come in, and then for four houses, they're here, and then they kick back out a little closer to Mission Road. I think that maybe some homeowners were confused about lot lines and easements and what they could or couldn't do on easements, and I think for a while, the city was like, "Hey, no big deal. It's like a really busy street you have in your backyard." I hope that if...
Self, or is that, are you gonna terrace that and widen it so it doesn't come out of its banks during high water?
It still will come out of the banks during the high water, but in order to offset the fill that we're putting in on the roadway to bring it up, we do have to go in on the creek and remove some of the embankment adjacent to the creek. And so that's the work, once we get in there to do that, that's why we're doing the trails, because we're gonna be tearing up the trails to get back in there.
So where along the trail will that, will it be done all the way from College down to one hundred nineteenth and then down to Row?
Uh, there's three, I believe there are three areas, starting at the north end by north of the lake.
Okay.
Of the north lake.
North of the north lake.
Yeah, there's just few, uh, few areas as you go south.
Okay.
And so that'll be done up front.
Okay.
And then we're gonna close, yeah, so the trails will be closed for a period of time, and during that time, we'll divert everybody over to the sidewalk that's on the west side of Townsend or Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other questions for Mr. Lay or discussion concerning, um, item H? Yes, Ms. Phillip.
When you mentioned the closings, I was just, when does this start?
Beginning, probably the first week of February, they're gonna start mobilizing.
So I'm hoping our Director of Communication is all on this because we need to divert a lot of traffic, right? We want a lot of people not going there.
Right, she, we have been working-
Postcards, postcards went out last week.
Yeah, we've been working with Beth, we have, I believe there are four by eight signs that we're gonna install here this week, hopefully, get them up, and so they're lar- obviously large signs for each direction to let everyone know that construction's coming, and then we're gonna send out more postcards here this week.
And so like, if you're coming southbound, you, you can divert to College before you get into them?
Well, uh, it's gonna remain open, one lane each direction from College down to one hundred fifteenth, and then you'll go over to one hundred fifteenth and Row, that'll be the detour. And then south of there, down to one hundred nineteenth Street will be closed, just, uh, it'll be open to local traffic only, but closed to through traffic while they construct the roundabout.
I'm just curious, if you're gonna give people the chance before they get past, you know, College, are you gonna give them a chance to go over to Row, or don't turn here, go to Row?
Yeah, we can have signs up that say, "Road closed ahead," most people don't follow those though, but-
Well, once they, once they've gone through it, they'll probably-
Do it a couple times, and yeah.
They'll probably remember, and that sign will go, "Oh, yeah, turn right."
I would also note that there's a plan to put signage up on the trail as well, uh, because the trail will be actually closed for longer than the streets will be. So the bicyclists and walkers will get a heads up before they get to the "Do Not Go Forward" sign, uh, to let them know that, uh, the trail will be closed.
And we'll detour, like I mentioned, we'll detour the trail people over to the sidewalk on the west side of Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
So David, just a question along those lines, though, the trail carries bicycle traffic, is it your expectation that bicycle traffic will be routed to the sidewalk as well?
So they'll be on, on the street is where they'll be able to go.
Okay, at least that's where it's supposed to be.
Yep.
I-
Yes, Ms. Kane?
Um, that's, that's an interesting thought, so are, are brand-new shiny bathrooms for, they're gonna be not used, blocked off? If the trail is gonna be closed and the road's gonna be closed, then that's gonna-
That park will remain open.
That part will remain open. So, so the trails on the, on the east side are not, are gonna be usable during this whole thing? I thought you just said the trails were gonna be-
Trails are gonna be closed initially-
Trail will be closed, but the park will be open.
Park will be open.
The park, the trail is east of the park.
But the bathroom is not adjacent to that park, the bathroom is-
The trail, the bathroom is in the, right next to the north lake.
Right.
And the parking lot that's at the north lake will remain open.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So fourth of July, then, is, this'll all be torn up, so traffic and the buses and everything, we're thinking ahead that far?
Uh, well, the road north of one hundred fifteenth Street will be open, so if we wanna utilize bus parking in the, at the park, we'll be able to still do that, at the north lake, I should say.
Is that where they parked? I thought they parked on the west side.
And then they park on the west side also, because they'll have access out to Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other additional comments or questions? If not, I think we have a motion and a second pending, um, all those in favor of, uh, adopting the resolution approving, uh, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Superior Bow and Asphalt Company, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. I believe that brings us to item K, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a utility agreement between the city and Evergy Metro, Inc., in the amount of five million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred one dollars and ninety-one cents pertaining to the one hundred twenty-third Street Mission Road to State Line Road project, uh, overhead power lines placed underground. Ms. Kane, or Mr. Sipple, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the number, help me reconcile the difference between, the cost of undergrounding is eight million, three, but it says here it's gonna be five million, seven. What are those two numbers?
So Evergy is required to relocate their overhead power if we're in conflict and they're in the right-of-way at their cost.
Right.
And so if we were to just direct Evergy to relocate overhead, they would have to relocate their entire facilities from Mission to State Line Road. And that cost is two point seven million dollars for them to do that. So the total cost to underground is eight point four, so we're only responsible for the difference between the total construction costs minus what they would have to pay to go overhead, so we're just paying that difference at five point seven million. I say only, it's still quite a bit, that's a big number.
Is, is this generally more expensive than the Mission Road project between one hundred and twenty-seventh and one hundred and thirty-third, and then south to one hundred and forty-third? These numbers are a lot bigger than what I think we approved years ago.
In the current CIP, it includes six million dollars out of the Ego Devo Fund, so this is, this is under what we show in the CIP. But it did go up significantly a few years ago, it was approximately half this. And then after we met with Evergy, they went out and started doing preliminary design work, and there's just a lot more, uh, switch gears and transformers that they need, because it's speeding so many different residential properties that they have to keep going, you know, it's a lot of side streets that they're trying to connect back into, and so that really increases the cost, along with a significant, significant number of trees that they're trying to avoid.
This is a very large number. It, it, what's the next road improvement project where you anticipate having to bury overhead lines af- after this one?
Yeah, so after this one, it would be Mission Road from one hundred and forty-third down to one hundred fifty-first.
Cause the, the distance between Mission Road and State Line's about a mile?
It's a mile and a quarter.
Okay, so we're really looking at four million bucks a mile, give or take?
Correct.
So, I don't know, I'm increasingly concerned about how expensive this is. You know, it was, it was a very altruistic sort of a thing years ago, when the mayor and the council approved this approach. It's great, but it's very expensive, very expensive.
Yeah, this section is quite a bit more expensive than what we've experienced in the past, but if you go out there, you will notice there's, trees are overhanging-
Right.
-the existing power lines, and so what they would need to do is to push the power lines five feet or so to the south.
To the south.
And then they're gonna trim another ten feet beyond that in order to create their buffer that they require, so it's gonna be, if we were to have them relocate overhead, there's gonna be a loss of a significant number of trees along that corridor.
Wh- when do you anticipate the start of this and the completion of this undergrounding?
So the next step, once we get this agreement in place, is we need to work with property owners, I believe there's about fifteen easements that we need in order to do this underground. And so if we are unable to get those easements, then we're gonna refer this back to the Public Works Committee to discuss whether we wanna proceed forward with condemnation on those properties, or if we just wanna tell Evergy to go overhead.
Will it start during calendar twenty-five?
We are hoping it'll, yeah, we're hoping Evergy will finish by the end of this year or early next year, so we can begin one hundred twenty-third Street improvements early next year.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple, appreciate it. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. David, you said the magic word of easements, and you tickled a part of my brain. Um, I heard from a couple of residents, years ago, this part of, um, Leewood South was in my ward, I don't think it is anymore, but as, when you're collecting the easements, and you've probably seen it, the way that the six-foot fences along, on the south side of one hundred twenty-third, they kinda jump eight feet, and then they come in, and then for four houses, they're here, and then they kick back out a little closer to Mission Road. I think that maybe some homeowners were confused about lot lines and easements and what they could or couldn't do on easements, and I think for a while, the city was like, hey, no big deal, it's like a really busy street you have in your backyard. I hope that if we're gonna be encroaching on easement, we need their cooperation, this might be an opportunity for you scratch my back, we'll scratch yours, Patty, don't listen. Um, and where these folks whose fences may be, some of these backyards are very tiny because of where their fences are to block the traffic. If they could, if we could give them the ability to, you know, maybe have a landscape easement there, where they could put their fences maybe two or three feet back, if, if that's an issue. It might improve the look along there, so these fences aren't jumping in and out, it also might improve several people's backyards in terms of a little bit more square footage. It's not like there's any usable space between one hundred and twenty-third and their fences, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, so-
There will be when we're done.
Oh, there will be?
That's the eight-foot sidewalk we're putting on the south side, that's part of the one hundred twenty-third Street plan, so we're gonna narrow one hundred twenty-third Street, we're moving that south curb line north, and then we're installing an eight-foot sidewalk from State Line all the way over to Mission.
Okay, so are some of those fences gonna need to be removed because they're too close, they were, they were built years and years and years ago to, in the wrong place, probably?
Most of our easements are just for Evergy, so we're not really getting into those fences, except at the locations where Evergy needs to put a switchgear or transformer.
Okay.
And so what we're, what Evergy wants is to be able to have the access off one hundred twenty-third Street to these switch gears.
Okay.
So wherever these go, they actually want the fence to dogleg around these, uh, boxes, so they're accessible from one hundred twenty-third Street. And I think that's gonna become the issue with the residents, because their yards are gonna all of a sudden look much smaller.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Other questions for Mr. Lay? Yes, Ms. Kane?
So when you're talking to these homeowners and the easements, are you, are you going to include the conversation about if we don't do it this way, this is what's gonna happen to your trees? Because I know that was a big conversation, again, at the Public Works Committee about, we would've wiped out every tree on the north side between, um, Row and, and, um, uh, Mission Road, rather, and State Line Road. They would've all-
Usually we don't like going in with that, we, if they ask us, what happens if I don't sign the easement, then we would look at it, we'd say, well, there's two options, we could either go through condemnation or decide not to bury the power lines, in which case, they have every right to put, put them in within the right-of-way, and then trim all the trees or remove them as needed.
So, so no, the answer is no, then you're not gonna, like you said, unless they say no, for some reason. But I mean aesthetically, that would change that whole stretch in there dramatically, if indeed we decided not to underground, underground.
That's correct, it would.
I mean dramatically, because those are big old forty-foot trees or whatever they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
Move to approve?
Thank you, Mr. Sipple, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Additional discussion over the motion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a utility agreement between the city and Evergy Metro, Inc., please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I believe the ayes have it, and the, uh, resolution is unanimously approved. This brings us to item L, the Police Department Monthly Report, which I believe, uh, Ms. Harrison asked to, uh, for additional discussion. Ms. Harrison?
Correct. Chief, I've got a couple of questions for you about, um, the traffic safe, the traffic, the accident report, traffic accidents. Um, and of course, I've left my agenda, so I can't see it anymore, I went to Google Earth to look for sidewalks. Um, one hundred and third and State Line looks to be a high-volume traffic accident location, and it looks like the, three of the top five locations for traffic accidents are along State Line. I wish we could, in a perfect world, work with KC Mo to make those intersections, I don't know, more user-friendly or, but maybe it's distracted drivers, I don't know. Is there anything that could be done at one hundred and third and State Line on the Leewood side of business that would make that intersection safer, or based on what you know? That's not, that's not where the problem is. The problem could be that people turn it in from, from State, from Missouri, I don't know.
Without going back and looking at the exact cause of each crash, it's difficult to, to say. I do know that, you know, through time, just the nature of that intersection being curved and downhill-
Mm-hmm.
-has been problematic. Um, we have, you know, we do do enforcement there to try and slow people coming down the hill towards the intersection. Um, we do other enforcement in that areas along, all along State Line. Um, you know, I can speak to one hundred nineteenth and State Line, many of those have been just people, you know, running yellows on turns, that's caused, that we've investigated the crashes, but as far as one hundred and third, you know, it's, it's been a problem on and off throughout the last ten years.
Okay, I do sit and watch more and more people just going right through, it's turned red, we all saw it turn red, and they just keep on going. Is it, is it about having a longer delay, then? I know that traffic moves slower, if, in terms of the lights sitting red and red longer while we wait for the less smart drivers to clear out of the way, or? Or is it just, it's just the nature of the beast with people being in a hurry?
I think it's closer to being nature of the beast with people in a hurry. Uh, as far as their actual timing, I would probably defer to the traffic engineers on that, but I think with anything, if you just make it a longer light, then you risk having more people think that they have time to get through.
Okay. I would just love to maybe idiot-proof all of our quarters, but I guess that's a big dream. Traffic engineer, he has some thoughts.
Mr. Lay?
Definitely not a traffic engineer, but, so that, uh, signal is operated by Operation Greenlight, OGL, which is the Mid-America Regional Council, and so they periodically go through and re-time our corridors for us when there's, uh, update tra- updated traffic data, but they do use the national standard for the all-red, the clearance, and so that's, shouldn't be an issue. But I will just add that this section of roadway carries about forty-five thousand vehicles a day, so it is one of the, it's actually carries more traffic than one hundred thirty-fifth Street does, so that's another reason why it's gonna be one of your number-one traffic intersections.
Okay.
Traffic accident intersections, because of just the sheer volume that it carries. And as the chief said, we'd really need to go back in and look at the accidents to see what, what the causes are.
Oh, I'm sure for eleven accidents in a month, you've got eleven different causes, but that's only as honest as people are actually being, but, in the moment, but, yeah, I know, I'm just trying to figure out where we can make things better, but maybe it's truly just a pipe dream, so, but thank you for the information. I'm glad to know it's part of Operation Greenlight, I didn't know that State Line cor- streets could, were part of that, so that's good to know.
We did hire an engineering firm about five to ten years ago to look at this corridor also, to see if there's any signage that they could install to help alleviate some of the congestion through there, because a lot of people just getting that, as you're heading south, most people get in that right turn lane, or the right lane, and then as soon as you cross the intersection, they're kinda crossing at a diagonal to get in that outside lane to go onto four thirty-five, and so we did look at possibly adding some signage, I think was kind of the recommendation, but it was, I think, about a two-hundred thousand dollar project in order to put the poles up over the roadway, to put the signs up to tell you which lane to get in for where you were trying to go.
You just paint them on the road?
Well, yeah, we could.
For a lot, for a lot less, I'm just saying.
And most of the people that travel that intersection, they do it five times a week, so they know which lane they need to be in, but, yeah, they get distracted. All right, thank you, gentlemen, um, nothing further on item L, so I would move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any other, uh, well, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there any other, uh, question or comment, uh, regarding, uh, the Police Department's report for chief? If not, all those in favor of accepting, uh, the Police Department's monthly report, uh, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the Police Department's monthly report is unanimously accepted. I believe that brings us to my report, I have just a couple of things, uh, this evening. Uh, one, I would note, as I mentioned earlier in my, in my introductory remarks, that, um, last night, uh, Ms. Larson and, uh, Ms. Stoddard, along with, uh, members of the command staffs from the Fire Department and the Police Department, I don't think I'm missing anybody else, um, attended the, um, Johnson County, uh, Wyandotte County, um, NAACP Martin Luther King Scholarship Awards Dinner, um, at, um, the Overland Park, uh, Convention Center. Uh, it was a very nice event, uh, it was an opportunity, as I said, for me to present, uh, to, um, Mr. Lyons, Henry Lyons, the chairman of the NAACP, um, our proclamation, he was very thoughtful, very thankful for it. Um, and, uh, at that time, we, uh, honored, uh, Mayor, um, the mayor of Aletha, and, uh, as well as, um, the, uh, the, say it, Mark, the, um, uh, anchor, thank you, the anchor for, uh, Channel Four News, uh, for special awards, uh, for contributions they've made, um, to the organization. Uh, in addition, I would note, and perhaps I'm stealing, uh, Mr. Sipple's, uh, uh, report here, but I would also note that, um, as has been our, our want for, I think, thirty years now, or close to thirty years, um, the city will be hosting, uh, an event to celebrate the Lunar New Years, uh, as a recognition of our sister city in, uh, Elon. Um, yesterday, I received an email, uh, from the mayor of Elon with a videotaped, uh, of speech, um, thanking the city of Leewood for what it's done, uh, to support the sister city relationship, and wishing us all a Happy New Year, and that, uh, that video will be played, um, at the event on January the thirty-first. So I think there, the chairman, who I know reasonably well, um, has, um, still some spaces available, uh, so if you're interested, uh, please, uh, call us here at City Hall, and we'll see if we can't make, uh, some additional space, um, available. I think there are a number of city council members who have, who've signed on, and there are a number of ci- uh, city council members who have conflicts, and certainly appreciate those, but it's always a fun event, uh, we'll have the lion dancers, I think they're called lion dancers, um, from the University of Kansas will be entertaining us again. And I think, oh, and I, I guess the other thing is I would note, and I've lost a little bit of track here, but on January the eighth, it was Diana My Day to, um, uh, hear about the Kansas Legislature, which was just getting started. Uh, we met with the, um, Leewood Chamber of Commerce for breakfast in the morning, and then I met with the other mayors in the region, um, with the delegation, uh, to the Kansas Legislature from Johnson County and Wyandotte County, uh, to discuss a number of issues, uh, that are impacting the cities that are on the agenda for the legislature this year. So that concludes my report. Um, I believe Ms. Larson may have a report as well.
I do, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a request for a matter to be referred to our legal and planning departments. Um, our background information, um, on December the thirteenth, um, council member Gayette and I received an email from, uh, Barry Gregson, who's the manager at Park Place, um, now, and it was, the email was regarding a noise complaint that had been filed against Park Place, um, from a member of the community that lived, um, in, that lives in the residence of our part, of Park Place, which is next door to the ice skating rink where the, the noise complaint, um, came from. Um, the ice sk- skating rink, it operates, um, the months, roughly November through March, it's weather-dependent, and, uh, it's been in operation for fifteen years, and is central to the wintertime success of Park Place. Um, while the ice skating, it, rink is operating above the sixty, um, decibel level, it's Mr. Gregson's belief that this was known during the planning process for Park Place. Um, prior to Mark Klein's departure, he'd searched the files, and we could not find any documentation of this. Uh, on December the eighteenth, Sherry and I, Travis Torres and Julie Curly, met Mr. Gregson at the ice skating rink. Um, Travis monit- brought the, um, decibel level monitor, it was seventy to seventy-one decibels at the property line on that date, sixty-seven decibels at the curb of the Park Place residences. Then we stepped inside behind the glass doors of the, um, kind of the entryway to the residence of Park Place, and it was below sixty decibels. And, and none of us could really perceptibly hear the chiller for the ice skating rink at, at, at that location. Um, it's noteworthy that the resident that made the complaint has renewed their lease for their apartment at the residences of Park Place, and they did not, uh, request a change in the location of their apartment, and it's thought that the complaint perhaps was filed during a two-week window, and there was additional construction at the ice skating rink chiller location, um, but we can't be certain of that. Um, the chiller's noise is dependent on the temperature and the sun, and it's inter- and it's more quiet at nighttime, because there is no sun and the temperatures are cooler, um, but it's very dependent on that. Um, Park Place is looking for ways that they can be a partner and help resolve the noise complaint issue. They've investigated an insulated blanket for the chiller, which is thirty thousand dollars, but it wouldn't, um, provide, um, necessarily enough sound mitigation to reach that sixty or below decibel level, so they're hesitant to invest that thirty thousand dollars. They're also looking into a less expensive box cover for the chiller, um, for sound mitigation. Um, and so, uh, we're asking, I'm asking for this matter to be revert, referred to the planning and legal department, so that they consider, can consider crafting an LDO exception, uh, with specific guidelines for this, this particular issue. Um, and, uh, we've had a few emails on the topic, and some of those specific conditions would be limiting the LDO exception to mixed-use, limiting it to when decibel levels are a certain level, um, within a, the adjacent building, perhaps. Um, when property management is working and good, a good neighbor to help resolve the noise issue, and, uh, it's a community that noise is coming from a community-approved amenity. Are just some possibilities for specific guidelines that could be incorporated into an LDO exception. And so, uh, I'm requesting that this issue be referred to legal and planning, so that they can give it the due consideration it needs, and then, um, if they craft something that they feel comfortable with, it would then go to the Planning Commission and then come back to us for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Larson, may I take that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Gayette. Any discussion or questions for Ms. Larson concerning the referral of this matter, uh, to the Planning Commission? If not, all those in favor of referring the matter as more, uh, specifically described, uh, by Councilwoman, uh, Larson, uh, to the Planning Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the matter is unanimously referred. Ms. Larson, did you have a second report from the Geser Committee?
I did not, um, I think Sherry is going to do the Ges- Geser Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Gayette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on Wednesday, January eighth, I, along with Councilwoman Mary Larson, met with our Geser Sister City Committee, and for our second meeting. Um, at this meeting, we discussed what our mission statement would be, we did a lot of great brainstorming on kind of, uh, really big, overall broad goals for, for the committee, and, uh, we hope to share those with you at our, after our second, after our third meeting, actually, when we'll, um, dive into some additional detail. And, um, to follow up on, as we kind of craft that broader vision, we hope to dive down into some more objectives to find out how we better connect and communicate the goals and objectives of the Geser Sister City community with, um, the community of Leewood.
Thank you, Ms. Gayette. Yes, Ms. Phillip?
I was just curious, are you talking in this, uh, context about, or specificity of how they, how they would like, how many people they'd like on their committee, that sort of thing, compared to us, what it is today?
Mm-hmm, so the goal is, once we kind of set that broad vision, we'll kind of dive down into some more details and thinking about, you know, do we, do we need bylaws, do we need very specific objectives, and I'm sure we'll kind of get into, get into some of that on how best to move forward with the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Phillip, thank you, Ms. Gayette. Other questions for, or comments for Ms. Gayette on the Geser Sister City Committee? If not, we appreciate it. If not, we appreciate your comments. Other reports from council members? If, yes, Ms. Phillip.
I would just mention that we have a stormwater committee coming up next Wednesday morning at seven thirty.
Excellent. And when is that again?
Next Wednesday at seven thirty.
Week from tomorrow.
We have a public works meeting coming tomorrow morning at seven thirty, if anybody's dying to come to that.
Thank you. Any other reports? If not, Ms. Stoddard, I believe that brings us to you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The, the item here that I wanted to update you all on, and I've asked David Lay to help me with some of the details, is related to the Johnson County wastewater force main project. And so this will be affecting State Line Road, and then also there's some city park impacts, although they're fairly mild. The Johnson County wastewater will be fencing off an area near the Leewood Dog Park in the middle of February. The construction fence will then bisect the Dog Park, but the south portion of the park will be open. The Johnson County wastewater, I think it's important to note, is being very accommodating in working on the project to make sure to minimize the impacts on the park. So they'll be sending crews in both directions in order to allow for that, and that makes it so they access the park only once, and again, it minimizes the impact on the park users. So there will be appropriate signage informing users of the Dog Park of these impacts, and we'll be also utilizing all of our communication methods to get that, get that information distributed. I wanted to ask David, though, to comment a little bit about the, and the informations in your packet, but I understand that it's sideways and it's a little hard to read on your iPad, so just to talk a little bit about the project and the impact along State Line Road. David, would you mind doing that?
Okay, if we can bring this up online or up on, there we go. How do I get this to full view? Up right? Oh, that one. There we go. Okay, I'll kind of go over the different phases real quick along State Line Road. So as Diane mentioned, what we're looking at here, the middle map, if you, or the map that's kind of on the right there, if you look at the bottom of that where it says number one, that's the first phase, and that is through city park. So they will have two contractors working, as Diane mentioned, they're going to fence off the north side of the Dog Park, and so they'll have two crews. One will go out towards State Line Road, the other one's going to go west towards the treatment plant. We'll get that finished. That's going to be, it's going to start-
David, excuse me.
Can you just clear that where the streets are, because it's still really small, so I get my bearing?
Okay, so, can you see, there we go. Can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the first phase right through here. So this is through city park, and it's going over to State Line Road on the right side. And so this will be the very first phase that they will start with two crews. They'll be doing this February through the very first of April, and then once they hit April is when they get out onto State Line Road. So they will work phase, phases two and three, which will be from four thirty-five up to one hundred and third street. They'll be working on that from March or April through July. And so they'll have one lane blocked off for southbound through that section more than likely. There'll be some times that they'll be off the roadway. Once they get north of one hundred and third street, they're going to actually have another crew that goes to the very north end, which is this phase four, which is up here by eighty-ninth Street and State Line Road. And so they will begin at the north end and start heading south. So they have all these broken down to different phases, and each one will be a separate permit from Public Works, so we can kind of help schedule and keep them on track as far as making sure they finish season phases. They're going to have, once they get that force main in, they'll come back in immediately and put the pavement in and restripe it and get that phase open when they move on to that next phase. So it won't have all of State Line Road closed at one time. So they're going to be doing this all in phases. The plan is to finish all of this by November, probably in October be finished. It'll be one lane each direction through these phases while they're trying to get those constructed, and most of the traffic, I'm assuming, is going to be using Ward Parkway over to Wornell to avoid, avoid the madness.
David, I'm not following the scale very well on the stages four through eight. Can you give us a ballpark idea of how, what the distance is, for instance, for four?
Yeah, so, let's see here.
And you can do it in blocks or miles or whatever the easiest way is to?
It's seven hundred and sixty-eight feet. About eight hundred feet for phase four. So they're, you know, they try, I think they kept them right around that eight hundred foot mark.
So it starts where and ends at eighty-ninth?
So at eighty-nine, they'll start up roughly around eighty-ninth Street, just south of eighty-ninth Street. That first phase will go to the entrance or so of Rockhurst High School. And then it goes from Rockhurst High School to Ninety-Fifth Street, and so they'll cross Ninety-Fifth at one point, so they're not going to have that closed down for several months. And then once they get through Ninety-Fifth Street, then they have the next, from Ninety-Fifth down to one hundred and third is broken into three phases.
So would it be easier, could they do it faster if they just made them all, because how do you go from one way, taking two-way to one way, going however the distance is, and then you'd open it back up? What does that really help you from a traffic point of view, because you congested it already? I guess they couldn't probably simultaneously do all this work.
No, it would be way too long. It's going to start in, what was that, April, I believe, up north, and then it goes through October. So if we close that entire section down for just one lane each direction, that would be, you know, way too long to-
I'd assume that they would be working on four, five, six, seven, and eight all at the same time. They just can't do that.
They wouldn't, yeah, they don't have the crews. They have two crews that are working, and they'll work in conjunction with each other on doing this project. But it's, we discussed it with them, trying to see, you know, to try to maximize that to try to be as efficient as possible to get a nice, long run installed. And so as, the city is participating in this project also, so Johnson County is installing their force main under one lane, which is the inside lane, and the city's paying for the adjacent lane to be removed and replaced because of the age of the roadway. It's, I don't know if you've been up there, but it's in terrible condition. So we'll have, once Johnson County's finished in November, we're going to have all-new pavement for southbound.
Nice, nice.
But we won't be, they won't be taking traffic from four lanes to two lanes, back to four, and then back to two.
Oh, okay.
It'll be four lanes to two lanes during that phase, and then open back up to four lanes. And then that'll just work its way down south to they get, until they get to one hundred and third street.
So go to Ward Parkway.
Yeah.
Forty-four thousand cars go to Ward Parkway.
Yeah, well, that's on, yeah, exactly. That's at south of one hundred and third street. So if you start going north, the cars, the volume decreases significantly, so.
And I do think we need to be really sensitive to how we're handling the light at the car wash at Eighty-Fifth Terrace, because I can see that being a major cut-through and being a problem of traffic for them. Still, you're going to cut through, once you find out the traffic spat ahead, you'll start to divert your attention, and that's the first through road that you've got before eighty-ninth. Or eight, yeah, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll look at that. If we need to adjust timings, we can do that, either at Eighty-third Street, Eighty-Fifth Terrace, and then you have eighty-ninth Street also.
Yeah, yeah.
And I assume that there's, there is provision made for the businesses that are fronted along there, that even when their eight hundred feet is being worked on, there'll be a way to get in and out of those businesses?
Yeah, and also with the residents, they'll always have access to their driveway, so they'll either plate over what they install, or they'll allow them access another way to get into their driveway. I mean, there's going to be a short time, once we remove the pavement, obviously, there's going to be a few days that they can't get into the driveway, but.
Have you talked at all with Johnson County Wastewater about their communications plan on this? Are we going to get information to both the businesses and the Leewood residents that are impacted by this?
Yeah, Brian Scoville's handling, handling that for Public Works, and he's working with Beth.
Mr. Sipples.
David, how deep will the trench be where the force main pipe is?
Typically, they're just, it's just a few feet deep.
So three or four? It's not going to be fifteen feet or anything like that?
It will get a little deeper at where they cross the storm sewer pipe. They may need to go underneath that pipe, so it gets a little bit deeper there, but it shouldn't be excessively deep.
I would imagine getting up to the Dog Park from Tomahawk Creek or Indian Creek is going to be deep to getting up there, but.
Well, they can change grades quite a bit. I mean, they have a little more flexibility, because it's not gravity-fed, it's all flowing under pressure, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sipples. Ms. Larson.
David, I really appreciate how you phased this out with Johnson County Wastewater, and especially the project along State Line. I think that will make it a lot more palpable for those of us who drive that stretch of road on a regular basis. And I've started trying to tell people who I also know travel that road a lot, short-term pain, long-term gain is my, is my message. And so, and I appreciate the staging, because I think that'll make it much better for everyone.
And the short pain will be two years, because in twenty twenty-six, we're doing north of eighty-ninth Street on State Line Road.
Well, short term is relative.
We'll give them a winner with an open roadway.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Lay or Ms. Stoddard? Thank you, Dave. We appreciate all the work you're doing on this. Diane, did you have additional matters for us? Thank you. I think this now brings us to new business, and with that, I would call Planning Commission case number one hundred dash twenty-four. Ms. Cricks, Ms. Hurley, would you like to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the RFP for our comprehensive plan update and LDO update, so we're pleased for you to have a chance to review this. The comprehensive plan was last updated, a major update in two thousand and one, and the LDO was last majorly updated in two thousand and two, so both of these are well due for a major look. As you know, we have regular updates to the LDO as we work through things and find ways to make things better, and we also do a statutorily required annual review of the comprehensive plan. So just kind of a little brief overview, the comprehensive plan is really our guiding document. That's going to tell us what do we want in the community? What do the residents want? What do the businesses want to see? So this is going to be kind of that ten thousand level, ten thousand-foot view of how we want to see things go. So an update to this document, this is going to involve a really robust public engagement piece. We're going to be talking with, like I said, residents, business owners, members of the development community, yourselves, planning commissioners, just a whole host of folks who we can get that input from, that we can really figure out, how do we want Leewood to grow? How do we want things to look for the next twenty-five years? What direction are we going to take? This is going to give us our goals, objectives, and action steps that we can then move on from. The LDO is then going to be really the nitty-gritty of that. How do we implement that on a day-to-day basis? How do we take a look at projects that come in? How do we shape them to fit that vision for the city? So we are really excited to have this coming up. This has been a long time coming. Staff has been working on this RFP since long before I started, so we're happy to have this finally moving forward. The Planning Commission did review the RFP document at the October eighth work session, and the October twenty-second regular session voted unanimously to move forward with issuing this. So what we're looking at in terms of a timeline, assuming that the governing body directs us to go ahead and release this, we'd be looking at posting it next Monday with responses due the first part of March, work through contract negotiations with a selected consultant, and then hopefully get this kicked off in June. Just from a logistical perspective, we will be doing the comprehensive plan first. That's going to be where we do the bulk of the public engagement, where we're really talking to people, really going out in the community, doing workshops, getting all of that feedback. Once we get that document pretty well wrapped up, that will flow into the LDO, so we can figure out, again, how do we put this into action? How are we going to see this vision come to life? How are we going to move forward with it? So I really like that we're bidding this together, to have one consultant group do both of them. This will help us keep it really cohesive and aligned so that there's no break in that it's going to be kind of a nice flow from one document into the next. So again, we are just looking for you all to direct us to go ahead and issue this RFP. If you have any questions, I can go ahead and answer those for you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Questions for Ms. Hurley? Mr. Sipples?
Julie, is this going to be, the submission, is it going to be qualifications to do the work? That's what Public Works does it, and then they negotiate the fee after they're qualified or after they're reviewed and found to be qualified.
Sure, so for a planning document like this, the way, these are typically issued as an RFP, so Request for Proposals. So the budget has already been approved for this. We do have the funds for it. The total budget is three hundred thousand dollars. So it is a little bit different process than bidding a public works project. So we know how much we have to spend on this, and this is something that staff did a lot of research on, what have other cities in the area spent on a similar type of project? So the reason we like to put out a budget with this in the actual document, these consultants are very good at crafting their proposal and their method around a budget. So we wouldn't want to put out something and just say, hey, give us your best shot. We would get proposals that would be way over our budget. You know, for instance, City of Overland Park just went through a similar process with their comprehensive plan and had a much different budget than what we're looking at. So with a planning document like this, we do like to give a budget, so consultants know this, kind of the scope that they need to craft that within.
How many proposals do you hope to get?
This is, I think, going to be a pretty attractive project. It's got a nice fee associated with it. It's a really exciting project. I think it is a little bit unique in bidding them together, so I think consultants are going to be very interested in this. I would expect to get, I, I hope, ten plus. So we will be posting this, of course, on the city's website. We'll be posting it on the National, the American Planning Association website. They have a, a space for municipalities to post these kinds of proposals. That gets a lot of views from consultants nationally. We'll be posting them to some of the regional APA websites, so this will get quite a bit of exposure. We also have a list of just local planning consultants that, you know, we're all familiar with just based on our past experiences, so we'll be sending the notice out directly to some firms. So I would anticipate ten plus would be my best guess.
That'd be refreshing. What I'm worried about is one or two, you know, because that, that puts you in a jam. Have you been through this process before in terms of developing a comprehensive plan?
I have. At my most recent job, we did a comprehensive plan during COVID, actually, so that was a little bit of a unique experience in terms of trying to get the public participation and engagement in a very limited sense that we were stuck with. So, yeah, I have been through it before. This is kind of what planners live for. We don't get this opportunity a lot of times, because you do tend to go twenty-plus years between them, so we're all really looking forward to it and really excited to have the opportunity to do a full public engagement piece with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sipples. Other questions for Ms. Hurley? Ms. Larson?
I just love, this is what planners live for.
You know how to have a good time.
Yes, we're going to have a lot of fun.
That's awesome, thank you.
And this is, and this is the carrot that Diane had to get such a justice.
Absolutely, yes. Look what you're going to come do.
That's great. Move to approve?
Thank you, Ms. Phillip. Thank you, Ms. Larson. The one comment I would have, or observation I would have, is I have a, and it's mentioned in there, but I have a mild concern, I just want to emphasize it here publicly, that I think that one of the most critical planning challenges that we have in the next generation is how to answer the question of incenting and encouraging redevelopment dollars and reinvestment in North Leewood while at the same time maintaining the character of North Leewood that has made North Leewood what it is. And I know there were little bits and pieces in the RFP that mentioned redevelopment, but I just want to emphasize that as, as we're looking for that consultant, there tends to be a focus on one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, and there needs to be a focus on one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, but there needs to be an equal focus, in my mind, on the, as I say, that balance of- there needs to be an equal focus in my mind on the, as I say, that balance of reinvesting in North Leewood and yet still maintaining the character. And to me, that's a really interesting and challenging problem. I think that's one of the things that makes this particular RFP a little bit unusual, is that you have a fair amount of still relatively new development along 135th Street, and then you have the exact opposite aging problem in North Leewood. So I would encourage you to keep that in mind, make sure that that remains that concern and that concentration on North Leewood, or Old Leewood, as they sometimes like to be called, is maintained. But I appreciate the work that's gone into this RFP. As you know, this is something that Mark Klein and I started talking about over two years ago, and so it's really exciting to see it finally come to fruition. It's going to be a ton of work for you and your staff. The public engagement is going to be critically important, and quite frankly, it's going to be a ton of work for us all, too. So buckle up because the next year and a half are going to be really interesting times for all of us. Any other comments? If not, I believe I have a motion and a second pending. All those in favor of approving the Request for Proposal and authorizing staff to proceed with its issuance, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the RFP is unanimously approved, and staff is directed to proceed as indicated. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Appreciate it. We now come to the scheduling of a governing body strategic planning session at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February the 18th at The Wave, and a governing, a joint governing body and management team strategic planning session at 6:00 PM on Monday, March the 10th at The Wave as well. And unless council has objection, I'll take these two together. Discussion. I think we've all, again, I want to compliment the governing body for all the work you've done on the strategic plan so far. It has been an arduous process. I think we've had some really great discussion, and we're coming, we're not quite to a landing yet, but we can see a landing site off in the distance a little bit. So is there any discussion over either of these meeting times for the strategic planning session? Thank you, Ms. Philo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of scheduling the two governing body or the one governing body meeting and the governing body and management team strategic planning session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and those two means are approved as scheduled unanimously. We now come to an executive session. This is an executive session that we had intended to have during the snowstorm, and we decided that for a variety of reasons, it was better to defer it to this evening. The plan here, or the motion I'm going to ask for, is a motion to recess into executive session for 30 minutes at about 8:05 PM to discuss matters pertaining to security of the city's governing body and committees and public facilities pursuant to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, Section KSA 75-4319B12, and for consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to the attorney-client exception at KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in the main, the open meeting will, I don't think that's quite right. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at the conclusion of the executive session at 7:30 or 9:35 PM. Is there a motion to the effect that I just stated?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Philo. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sipple. All those in favor of moving to executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it unanimously, and we are recessed until 9:35 into executive session.
The governing body will come back into order in its regular meeting. I note that it's 9:35 and we have just reconvened after an executive session. There were no actions taken during the course of the executive session. Stacy, is a motion actually necessary?
A motion to adjourn this meeting.
Right, but I'm not quite there yet. On the sheet you gave me, you said there's a motion regarding action as a result of discussions.
You won't need one for that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to become before the governing body this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the governing body.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Zippel. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and this evening's meeting is adjourned.